Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight, which we are streaming to the public. I'd like to first begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, with our God.
Mr. Capano?
If I may, I'd like to take your attendance, if I may, Mr. Romangino, Mrs. Abreu.
Yeah.
Mr. Capano?
Yeah.
Mrs. Freydo?
Yeah.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Dr. Cantleana?
Yeah.
Mr. Rancourt?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Shelley?
Here.
Mr. Abakia?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no worries. I'd just like to read a quick statement, if I may, Mr. Romangino. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public for advance notice of and to attend a meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Riverside Park Board of Ed has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, the time, and place thereof posted in the offices of the Borough Club, the Borough Library, the Borough Rec Department, the Office of the Board of Ed, and the offices of Schools Number Three, Four, Five, Six, and the High School on January 6, 2021. And notices were forwarded to reporters of the record, January 6, 2021. This is an official meeting.
Okay, once again, I welcome everyone to our meeting. We do have a short presentation tonight by our high school principal, Mr. Pinto, who will be with us in a minute. But just before that, there are a couple of items I would like to just make mention of. Monday, January, I'm sorry, Tuesday, January 19th, all of our hybrid students returned to class. We hope we can keep providing both a hybrid environment for students who want to attend school, as well as a remote student program for students who are at home. On Tuesday, all of our staff, after approximately six weeks, returned back to the schools. So, as I said before, we hope that we're able with things that are going on now with COVID, COVID, that we're able to keep our schools open and provide onsite learning for our hybrid students. Last Monday, January 11th, we started our abbreviated winter sports season. In the high school, we have basketball, both boys and girls, that are in process right now, and also bowling. As you know, we've mentioned many times before, the state has shifted the schedules because of COVID. So basketball, both boys and girls, and bowling started on January 11th. February 1st, indoor track will begin. And then after that, there will be dates, I think right now it's March 1st, for wrestling and also for volleyball. But as time goes on, if there are any changes in those dates, I will let both the board and the public know. Middle school sports, unfortunately, we didn't get the kind of participation for girls' basketball and cheering that we thought we would have. It's probably due to a number of students being remote and possibly not wanting to participate. We are going to make every effort to provide middle school basketball for boys, because there was interest. So hopefully, we'll be able to fill the schedule for our students, because other schools are cutting back on programs primarily for their middle school. But we will make every effort to provide a program, and I believe that's in the works right now. The last two meetings, our board has had some discussions regarding co-opping football with Ridgefield. You know, over the last couple of years, our enrollment in football has decreased, and our concern is that if it keeps decreasing, we're not going to be able to provide just our cliffside students with a quality program. So our Board of Education and the Ridgefield Park Board of Education are in talks about possibly co-opping, which many other districts have done in the past, and it's turned out to be successful. I know Leona and Passaic Park have had a relationship for a number of years. So our attorney, Steve Fogarty, is drawing up a contract. Once that contract is drawn up, I will share that with our board, with the Ridgefield Board, and then with the public. So we hope to make a decision by that, probably by our March meeting, if not soon. But that is, that is in process. In your folder tonight is a draft calendar for the 2021-22 school year. Again, it's just the draft that I put together so we could get a projection of what next school year will look at, look like. If you get some time, you can look the calendar over. If you have questions, you can email me. Or ask questions at the next meeting, I'll try to, at our next work session. So I'll try to approve that calendar at our February meeting. And that will give parents and staff and students a look at what to expect for next year. Okay, at this time, I would like to, any questions? So at this time, I would like to ask if there are any committee reports?
No, just on the front of those three rounds, you know, the Board of Education is down, we have to reach number five and three. All the cases that we had, two steps to be rectified, they go to the country here, so another one to the other, and we didn't have actual feeling. And I'm pretty sure, I think, you need to pass that, that project.
Yeah, we're hoping the next, three weeks.
President, you know, I think the table on the university, people are getting house days and, I don't know, they're off there.
Okay. Okay. Any other committee reports? Okay, so at this time, Mr. Pinto, if you are ready.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Romangino, thank you, Board of Education. Before I begin this, and share my screen.
Just hold on one minute.
Okay.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Romangino, thank you, Board of Education. Before I begin.
Would you like me to continue now?
It's better now.
Continue, okay. I'd like to just recognize our staff today at the high school and through the district. As many of you might be aware, we lost internet service through Altice. And the staff did an incredible job maintaining instruction using their personal devices and hotspots throughout the district. So I just want to recognize the staff for the incredible job they did despite losing service today. The second thing I'd like to do is, just so you're all aware, the Class of COVID Deluxe Edition is available. And if you have not yet purchased your copy, I strongly encourage you to purchase your copy. There's an introduction by Congressman Pascal. There's also an excerpt from Benjamin Luterer. So we do encourage you to purchase a copy if you haven't. The students have been recognized essentially nationally at this point. They'll be on CNN shortly, there's a CNN interview that's running. And there's also a NBC News interview that's running with a number of the students. It'll be airing shortly. So I do, yeah, I just want to recognize the students under the tutelage of Mr. Sean Adler for the tremendous work. Because all this money that goes through the proceeds of these books, it goes back to the students, they will be awarded scholarships through this, through the sales of these books. So just like to recognize them also. At this point, I'll share my screen and begin to take you guys through some, some, I want to say initially, we thought it was very troubling, but we're actually very happy, because as opposed to reacting to something much later, we recognize that we were the first, or one of the first, to kind of identify a problem and actually become proactive in it. And we're going to take you through some lost learning analysis. And just make it a little bigger. Present, okay. So lost learning analysis, shortly after my return from my leave, we noticed at the close of the first marking period that there were some disturbing signs amongst populations of our school. And we brought these concerns to the supervisors, to Mr. Romangino, to the middle school, and we looked at them very closely. But before we begin, we're going to look at some, just some demographics of our population. You know who our population of students are. We're, you know, half the students are on free and reduced meals, or referred to as farm students. We have students with special needs. English language learners, large percentage of the population. Households that speak primarily, language primary, other than English, all right? Seventy-three percent of our population, and that's, you know, Turkish, Arabic, Spanish. There's not Portuguese, those are the major languages. And there's a number of other languages, approximately 28 languages are spoken in this high school. We have a very high transient rate, one of the highest in the state, and the number of students. So this is older data, our 1920 data isn't, isn't, it's available, but it's not official yet. So once it's official, we'll update this. But just a little bit of information about the students in our building. What we noticed was our marking period one failures were higher than normal. We see, we looked over the course of this year, all right? And they kind of peaked in 2020. We looked back at five years of data, and we noticed that they also peaked in 2017, but we attributed that to a quarterly benchmark that we were administering that was impacting the failure rate, much higher than traditional. And so when we looked at, and when we take out this, this 2017, we see the trend is somewhere around 500, but it spiked this marking period. And this is marking period one failures only, all right? So we're not looking at across the board. We noticed this because we had an increased number of conversations with parents and students regarding their participation and their, their, their work or lack thereof in school. And these, these conversations became more prevalent, and they were happening more often. So we decided to look at the data and really, really dig down. And we saw that there was a 92% increase from 2019 to 2020 in the number of failures on report cards. This isn't something we're proud of, it's not something we want to broadcast, but it's something we want to address. And in order to address it, we need to be transparent, and we need, we need to talk about it. So we, we looked at the comparison over five years, and you can see, over a thousand, there were over a thousand classes, or a thousand failures in, in various classes. So 387 students had a thousand, over a thousand failures across these classes. These numbers supersede all the other numbers, except for 2017. And like we said, we identified that as due to our quarterly that was weighed and impacted students. Students didn't take the quarterly seriously, they simply just, you know, didn't even take the test, basically. They opened the screen, submitted a bunch of answers. It wasn't working the way we wanted to work it, so we modified it, we adapted to it. But we can see the difference, you know, when we lay the numbers out, 2015, 2016, 2018, 2019, we have a, you know, that, that mean number, approximately 500, where the, we're, listen, we're not happy when students fail, but we need to say, hey, why are so many students struggling right now? What, what is taking place here? So we, we started having these conversations amongst the supervisors at the high school and, and with the administrative team at the high school. And then the middle school started joining these conversations. And then when we looked at the middle school, we saw even, even greater increases. So we brought the middle school on to have this conversation, to say, hey, what can we do for our population? Because we saw these increases, you know, in, this is grade eight, a 600% increase. And then we looked at grade six, we even started going back, even in digging deeper. And we looked into grade six, and we saw that, you know, the number just, it jumped tremendously, over 300% increase from last year. And, and there wasn't much of an increase prior to this. You know, we had a few struggling students in, in, in grade six. Well, why all of a sudden are all these students struggling now? So we've got to figure out what's going on, how can we, how can we get, how, how? We can't simply continue with these kind of numbers. And the, the, the conversation began, okay, what can we do? We can see that, we also looked at the honor roll, because we reached out to other districts in Bergen County. And listen, we're, we're in Bergen County, but there's two districts in Bergen County, if we're being honest and we're being fair. There's districts north of Route 4, and there's districts south of Route 4. And we reached out to districts similar to our own district, with similar demographics. And they're all reporting that they're, they're seeing these results in the, amongst the populations. Now, when we reached out to the, the Upper Bergen County Schools, north of Route 4, they, they're, they're, they were coming back saying, no, we're actually seeing the difference. We're seeing, we're seeing students succeeding, all right? So we said, you know, let's look at our honor roll. And we looked at our honor roll, and we saw that the number of high honor roll students was higher than it's ever been before. And, you know, the, the total number of students on the honor roll didn't really change that much, but the high honor roll students are, are, they're doing, they're succeeding. They're, they have the means to be successful in this environment. And when we looked at the actual grades, the grade reporting, we saw the B and Cs, B students primarily, the largest decrease in Bs across the marking period. So it's our average students that are really struggling. And I don't want to say regressing, but not, not meaning the same success as our high performers, but our high performers at the high school, when we looked at it, they're exceeding the expectations at this point. So we looked at the high school failures by grade level, and we see it's affecting all the students. There's fewer seniors in classes, so we have fewer seniors failing. But we do have, across the board, it's fairly comparable, approximately a third of the students across the board are struggling in this environment. And we saw that the 10th graders had the highest, at 34%. We looked at the cohorts, because we thought that maybe it was just the remote students. It wasn't just the remote students. It was both the remote students and the students that were on the hybrid schedule. The A and B cohort students were also struggling, you know, anywhere from 25% to 30% of them were struggling in their classes. So it wasn't just the remote students who aren't logging in, it's across the board, because the hybrid students, when they're not in school, they're struggling to log on, and they're struggling to stay engaged also. Now, we looked at the failures across the departments. And math is traditionally the hardest subject. And when we had these conversations, learning math online remotely is very, very difficult. And the math teachers are struggling. But what we really saw, that was really interesting, was, you know, the, the number of failures in social studies, or the number of students failing in social studies and financial literacy classes. Those aren't four-year requirements, there's fewer students in those classes. And we started having these conversations with instructors. So this data gave us the opportunity to go into classrooms and speak with the instructors, where we're seeing this, why is this happening in your class? What's, what's the reason? Are the students not logging on? Are the students not submitting work? Are the students, you know, is it the way we're, we're instructing our students at this point? So while initially, we saw this as, hey, what are we going to do? We can't have all these kids fail. It led to very, very positive conversations, and it led to somewhat of a culture change here amongst the high school and amongst the middle school. I can't really speak for the middle school, but I can speak for the high school, because it opened up the discussion. And where we know this is occurring in schools throughout the county, only recently are schools in the county starting to say, hey, what are you doing? We're noticing this, what are you doing? Because quite honestly, this is something districts don't want to talk about. I want to thank Mr. Romangino for giving me the opportunity to share with you guys. And, you know, even, even meeting with the middle school and being part of those conversations to say, how can we address this? How can we fix this? Because this is an unprecedented time. Students are being asked to do things they've never been asked to do. Teachers are being asked to do things they've never been asked to do. And quite frankly, we don't have the capacity, no school has the capacity. And this isn't just a Bergen County problem, this is a national problem. USA Today has reported on it. Stanford University is conducting a ton of research on this right now, and publishing that research. It was recently in the, not the record, but northjersey.com recently highlighted this. I've seen it on the news. So this is, learning loss is something that we're talking about, and it's something that we need to recognize, and it's something we need to address. So we looked at the special ed in the L population. And we see that, you know, school-wide, the L population versus the school-wide population is approximately 30% of that population. So there's not really a difference between, the special ed problem is a little bit higher, but the Ls and the school-wide population, the general population, it's, it's very similar. So it's not a subgroup, it's, it's across the board. We looked at the attendance, and we noticed that the attendance is down. And this is something that I take very, dear to me, this is very dear to me, the attendance. I worked very hard at maintaining our attendance, our chronic absenteeism, I'm happy to say, has been low, the state aver, has been below the state average since I've come on board, because it's something we've targeted, we've identified it, and we've continued to attack it, and, and really encourage students and, and help them understand the value of being here. The greatest predicament of, or predictor for student success is student attendance. If students are in school, students will succeed. So our goal is to get them in school, and we've noticed that our attendance is down right now. And we, we started to ask, why is our attendance down? Why is this drop? All the kids have to do is log in. What's going on exactly here? Are they not logging in? Is it something that we're doing? So we looked at all these data points, and we saw the guidance feedback. We asked the guidance department, you know, what are you getting from your meetings with parents? You're, you're, you're reaching out to kids, you're reaching out to parents, what is going on? The parents are shocked, you know, the kids are always on the computer, but they don't know what the kids are on exactly. You know, the kids are on Netflix, they're distracted, they're, they're gaming, they're on YouTube. Parents are off to work, and our population of students, they're required to watch their younger siblings. And it's disruptive, many of them are sharing devices, many of them, you know, are working on interrupted internet or Wi-Fi. Students have expressed to counselors, there's just too much work, they're overwhelmed. They're in school for a number of hours a day, and then they're given work after school. So they're just on the computer constantly, and it's, it's stressful for them. They, they're developing, you know, some students have reported, you know, some headaches, so we've eliminated that time. Students feel that the level of work is so unattainable, they've basically just given up. And this is something we call learned helplessness. And it's, once students develop learned helplessness, it's, it's really difficult to get them beyond that learned helplessness. So, you know, we, it's something that, you know, we've had these conversations with our staff, and we're going to talk more about that. But, you know, make, setting goals for the students, and, you know, making sure that, you know, we're not overloading the students, because the students are coming back telling us that they feel overloaded. And that the parents are telling us they're on the computer all day, and, you know, something's not adding up. And we, we need to find a balance between screen time, academics, and personal life for these students. As Mr. Romangino said earlier, athletics was post, you know, athletic seasons have been shortened. You know, you're looking at, you know, intramurals to make available to the students. We're looking at, you know, outdoor workouts for these students, having difficulty fielding middle school teams because of student participation, or other school districts just not running programs, not being able to set up a schedule. So really, you know, the students, they're struggling through this. And it's really, you know, layering this additional work on top of them, you know, isn't, isn't beneficial. So we've got to figure out some way to make this balance. And then the family loss, and, you know, that's where there's just, there's, there's so much, I guess, familiar, familial, and I can't see my screen for issues that they're, that they're facing, whether it's lost work, eviction, childcare, some of our stories that we, that we hear from these students, it's, they're truly heartbreaking. So, you know, and the staff who's grading them don't necessarily know this. So we, we have to figure out a way to make this work and convey this, and set up some modifications for students. And that's really what all this data led to. So we looked at a few different things. We looked at, at the district level, what can we immediately do to affect change? What can we do, what district decisions or policies that we're currently running that kind of, you know, can, can, we can pivot on, we can be flexible on? And, and how can we do it without, you know, you know, changing everything? So we looked at our, you know, these policy changes that we can, can make to maybe instructional, you know, remote instruction. We revisited our instructional routines, and had, have had a lot of conversations with our staff about instruction, appropriate instruction during this time. Um, yeah, and, and for different courses, you know, you're gonna, you know, the, the AP population, Advanced Personnel Population population, they need to understand that, you know, there's a task that they're preparing for, there's going to be work there. And it's some of the other places where we have to have these conversations, where, you know, it, it's, it's the work that you're, you're providing, that staff is providing versus the work that students, that's truly meaningful, and that's actually attainable by the students under these conditions. And, you know, how is project based, you know, we're looking at project-based learning, what projects seem to be working, and what projects are you struggling, are teachers struggling getting feedback back from kids? We brought in our supervisors, our child study teams, our guidance for very specific approaches, and we'll talk about those shortly. And lastly, there's some items that we need to explore as we go down the road and revisit. And those include bridge programs over the summer, what grants are available to us to combat learning loss. And those are things that we need to continue to explore and have more conversations. And look at this data at the end of marking period two, and at the end of marking period three, as we move through the school year, which we plan to do in the next few weeks as marking period two closes. So some district decisions and policy changes that we've made was the mailing of the progress reports. This is very simple. Mail progress reports, mail marking period two report cards and portal letters. It's the 21st century, we expect everyone to be able to access all this information online. It's simply they don't, not everybody does. I'm a parent, I struggle to, you know, go into my student's, my child's real-time portal and follow how he's doing. So you know what? Getting something tangible, whether the progress report is commending the student, or the progress report is calling for a, a, you know, a conference that's necessary or something, they're getting something tangible. And this was an easy fix, and this is something Mr. Romangino was, you know, was all behind. Start mailing them. So we, we're, we're in the process of doing, I believe, our, our, our third mailing at this point, maybe second mailing at this point, because we sent out the progress reports. Oh, we're putting the portal letters in with the report card, so it's, it's two mailings for this. We found that a number of students are working, so we've, to help them with the work, especially with that shift to that full remote schedule, creating an asynchronous option, if the student is, is completing the work in a timely fashion, and if the accommodation is requested and justified. So that asynchronous option, although, while it's not the, the answer for everyone, for certain students, it is the answer. For the students that are the only income right now in their household, or one of two incomes, or, or, you know, for the student that has to work because they got a surgery and they have medical bills, the asynchronous option is the answer. And as long as we can confirm that, we're doing that. The cameras off does not result in attendance policy. So this is something that we, we thought was the best idea. Oh, the students just have to have the cameras on, if the cameras are on, the, the students marked present, they'll be present for instruction. Very simple, you log on, cameras on, you're present. Our students weren't turning the cameras on, and there was battles, battles in classrooms of turning your camera on, turning, a lot of lost instruction time. And we have this tool, GoGuardian. We didn't know a lot about GoGuardian when we developed this policy at the beginning of the year. We know a lot more about GoGuardian now. We can use GoGuardian to monitor the students, to filter the websites that the students have access to. And at this point, my staff is using GoGuardian. And they, whether the kid has the camera on or not, GoGuardian is a tool that they can use to see what that kid is doing, where, where that kid is engaged. Is he engaged in the actual assignment, or is he engaged in something else? And then we're increasing social media newsletter and mailing. So we, this is something that, coming from the building, my, coming from the building principal, I have to commit to ensuring that more social media goes out, highlighting our student successes. A newsletter goes out that we're hoping to get out by the end of marking period two, and the mailings, as discussed earlier. So these are something, some things that we're committed to. And these were some district decisions and policies that were quite easy to change, and we think have already had, you know, some results, some immediate results, specifically for that asynchronous population. And that, that camera penalty, that was kind of, you know, really detrimental in hindsight, but at the time in August, we thought it was the best idea. And many other districts, cameras got to be on. We didn't have GoGuardian, we didn't know the knowledge behind GoGuardian. So we revisited our instructional routines also. We're requiring failure comments for all failures. It's very simple, this is something we, we always ask, but something we're reinforcing with our staff, is that there's comments, specific comments as to why students are failing on the progress report and on the report card. Record and make available lessons of new material. This is something else that we've, we've really emphasized with the staff, and there's increasing emphasis, that new material, when new instruction takes place, it needs to be recorded, because some students need to revisit it, and they cannot come back to class for extra credit at, or for extra help at the end of the day. So this needs to be available. Conference more with students, we lost breakout rooms for, for a short time. And it's really this conference, conferencing ability, where we're seeing the teachers have the most success with our students. When they can devote that one-on-one time with the students, aside from other students, give critical feedback in a setting that is personal, that's where we're seeing positive returns with our students. So this emphasis on using breakout rooms, you know, having these conversations with the student like you would when you were in school, this is the answer. It's something that Google introduced at some point in the fall, we lost it temporarily, it's back now. So we have a large number of staff that's using this conference room and conferencing ability. And really, that's where we get that interpersonal connection that we weren't getting in these meets. The ability to remain flexible, INRS-ing students who are struggling and who do not, who do attend class. So if students are not attending class, there's a, there's a disengagement. We're making house calls to those students, I'm knocking on doors to the students that don't report to class, guidance gives me a list, I go out, I knock on their doors. You know, the kids smile when they see me, because, you know, somebody cares about them. That's what we're realizing, the kids just, they're so depressed, they just want somebody to care about them. And it's little things like that, knocking on the doors, telling the kid, hey, listen, we can, we can get through this, but we need you to do your part. You know, we've identified a number of students that need mentoring. Not nearly as many students as we like, but we've identified students that, you know, are responding to mentoring. So we've created a mentoring program. So we've created a mentoring program with peers and adults and they're, you know, we have, you know, a handful of students right now, but you know, it's something we push out every week and we have student response. We're utilizing the pass fail specifically in our ELL population, it's something we found out we can do three years ago. The state kind of gave some guidance on ELL populations and that we could use a pass fail. Prior to that, we weren't using a pass fail, districts, a lot of districts do not use the pass fail. They had, they're actually, you know, questioning the validity of the pass fail. The state is saying, hey, use the pass fail specifically with this population of struggling ELL students. So it's something we've reemphasized with our staff that, hey, we have this option, the student's coming, the student's trying. The state says they have a WEDA score, which is a one to a 3.5, we can use this option, let's use this option for these students. And it's really, you know, it, we're following the state guidance in that. The instructors need to use Go Guardian, plain and simple. So we've put out a bunch of trainings on Go Guardian. We, we plan on doing some more trainings next week for our staff because we have to use Go Guardian. The cameras on was not working. So the Go Guardian function does work, students who choose not to use Go Guardian, we're getting on their, their parents, we're telling them they have to do this. I've been to two houses so far, kids that refuse to use Go Guardian. And tell them essentially, if you choose not to use Go Guardian, the next conversation has to be with, you know, revoking your technology privileges, because this is a district tool that's on every district Chromebook, we need you to use the Chromebook and make sure you're signed in to, to using it. And there's some things that we can do, we can give assessments on the Chromebook and essentially forces the students to use those, the Chromebooks that we've, we've, we've granted them to ensure this and, and ensure there's no cheating. So Go Guardian has some tremendous capability. A student cannot receive a failure from marking period two unless communication is documented in real time. This is huge, for whatever reason, in this remote environment, teachers not being in schools, students not being in school, there was a big disconnect between the kids and the, and the, and this, this, this instructional staff. And we essentially said, we need you to call home. I, I, I sat the staff down in a, in a, in a meeting and said, we, I need you to call home, I need you to make, make, make contact with parents, you need to try and you need to document it in real time. So that when, when you do it and it's documented, guidance can follow up, I can follow up. If it goes up the, the road to Mr. Roman Gino, he can see that, you know, a number of attempts were made. We have to make every attempt to help these kids. So we did this and within the first two weeks of just having the staff make phone calls for their struggling students. And we said, listen, you have an hour lunch, you actually had long, you have an hour and 20 minute lunch. Take, you know, five of your kids that are struggling the most each day and just call home. Call home, try to get the parent on the phone. And if it doesn't work, just document the line doesn't work or notify somebody the line doesn't work, we'll, we'll figure out the right number. And within two weeks of doing this, we've seen a 70% increase in our attendance. So just by making phone calls, by the teachers making phone calls and the kids kind of bought into it. We'd follow up with some phone calls and kids were like, yeah, I talked to Mrs. so-and-so, I talked to Mr. so-and-so. Yeah, no, I'm gonna start going to class. So the, the, the fact that the teachers showed a level of interest in the kids, the kids responded. And lastly, instructional staff was hesitant about calling, we provided some, some options. Use Google Voice, you can use the Google Meet to make the phone call, you can do star six seven. So there were some apprehensions about making those phone calls from their personal devices and, 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 you know, not being in the building, but we were able to work around that. Our supervisor, CST and guidance, at the supervisory level, they started to have these specific conversations with areas that we identified, high rates of failure and, and why? Is it lack of engagement? Is it students not showing up? What's going on? I'm gonna help you. We have our supervisors going into meets, pulling kids out, meeting kids individually and having them log in to Go Guardian and show me why you can't get onto Go Guardian. You know, having these conversations with kids, identifying the staff that are having success and allowing them to share. So we've gone back into our department meetings and given them opportunities to share and to share out and say, hey, what's working for me? What, this didn't work for me, so I tried this and that's having positive results. We've actually seen a level of writing in this remote era that's higher from our student population that's, than we've had before. There, there's, they're producing meaningful works across the board in, in our English department. And we're noticing it because we're having these professional conversations about what's working and this conferencing with the students. The CST and guidance, you know, continue to assess, assist with the differentiating for students, ensuring that they're, that the, that the teachers are adhering to them, CST is advocates for these, these students. So they, they, you know, they need to provide some input and some guidance for some of our instructional staff and what is appropriate accommodations during this time, because nothing's normal right now. And lastly, the guidance also, they're involved with meetings with supervisors, students, administrators. So, you know, they're, they're on the phones, they're calling the kids, they're updating records, they're notifying me which kids need house visits. And then there's, there's some things that we need to continue to talk about. This development of a growth mindset, and this is something we're sharing with the kids, that if they get back to work and they produce that, you know, we'll explore overriding that marking period one failure. You know, if they demonstrate growth over the course of, oh, the, the school year. Project-based assignments, what is working, as I stated early, conferencing with students seems to be working. You know, breaking down research assignments into very specific tasks works when you do it correctly and when you pre, when you conference with students. Mentoring opportunities for staff and students, the staff wants to help the kids. It's, you know, the kids that, we need to identify which ones need the most help. And then, you know, so this is ongoing, it's something we started, but it's ongoing. And then instructors really finding success and what is working, this has been very difficult for instructors. Our staff essentially learned, you know, how to conduct a class online within a matter of weeks last spring. And they continue to learn things because the technology continues to change and they continue to adapt. And not everything works all the time. And it's important that they share what's worked, how they're getting their students to engage. Why are their students engaging and my students not engaging? So this is, this opportunity has led to a lot of professional conversation. And then still to come is, you know, if we do have a higher than normal failure rate at the close of the school year, how are we gonna address it? Are we going to, you know, you know, if our failure rates at the middle school continue to be as high as they were in the first marking period, are we going to socially promote these students? Are we going to have a bridge program over the summer? Are we gonna have, you know, not a, not a, not a summer school, but a, a true bridge program to make up for this learning loss? Those are conversations that we have to have. And, you know, hopefully after marking period two, we can have those, the, you know, those conversations as we'll have a better idea of, are we truly having success or success? Or is, is the immediate results superficial? So that's all I have, so I'll stop the share. And I don't know, Mr. Roman Gino, if there's any questions or you want me to stick around for questions later?
Well, we'll take some questions now. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
I, I have a lot of questions about the data, but I'm not gonna be giving a very, very honest data. As far as looking at 2021 first marking period, I'm comparing these 2019 first marking period to the area of the year. But my most profound question is why did it take a pandemic to come up with these decisions? Because the things that I've seen on the screen tonight have been going on for my 30 years of education. Here is your school improvement panel that should have been looking at this for years and years, and you've been coming up with new decisions. Why is it ill-begging for the CFP supervising and guidance department to be reading this thing and having depression complications? I really have a concern that it takes a pandemic for this to be done. Because I was asking Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Roman Gino why this could have happened in Cliffside Park in the last 30 years. Because I will praise the kindergarten teachers that the kindergarten teachers have been conferencing with the students since they were five-year-olds. But why doesn't that happen at the highest level, through the part of the pandemic? Or why aren't we mentors here giving no pass fail with your different situation or not?
So I'm sorry, Mr. Roman Gino, can you restate that? I had a real hard time hearing that question.
Can you hear now?
I can hear you.
Before, make sure. Can you hear us, Larry?
I can hear that, yes.
I have a question about the data, first of all, when you're looking at 2020, are you looking at only the first marking period of 2020 compared to the first marking period of 2019? Or are you looking at end of the year scores in 2019? And if this, if your end of the year scores in 2019 were better, we were in a pandemic situation and teachers were not taught how to teach remotely and yet the scores were higher in the spring of 2019 than they are in the fall of 2020. I'm not sure about that data. But data aside, which I have a lot of questions about how you compare your data and how you're drawing your assumptions. All data aside, I'm looking at the instructional strategies that you're using. And my question is, why haven't you been looking at this all along with your school improvement panel? And where are your professional learning communities that should be having these conversations? And why hasn't this been taking place in Cliffside all along? Because what I see from the child study team, from guidance and so forth, is just what's in their job description. And as far as mentoring, caring about students and conferencing with students, that's been going on in the elementary schools, at least for the last 10 years that I could see. Because they were conferencing with kids in kindergarten. So why hasn't this been happening in Cliffside Park High School all along? Why did it take a pandemic to start having conversations? And what kind of conversations are you having around assessment and how assessments need to change to adapt to remote learning? And also, project-based learning, with all due respect, has been around for the last 20 to 30 years. Why hasn't Cliffside ever entertained project-based learning and dealing with students' learning styles before? And also, with all due respect, I do believe kids are being penalized for not having cameras on and not participating.
Alright, so there's a, there's a number of questions there. The first one is the data question. Is, and I, and I'm gonna try and answer this, there's a lot of questions going on here. But the first question I'm gonna tell you is, marking period one data is compared to last, was compared to last five years marking period one data, that's what we looked at. Alright, so marking period one data did not, is not compared to end of failures for fourth marking period. The fourth marking period or the, the school data from last year is severely skewed. And it's skewed because we were working through a pandemic. And it's skewed across the board in Cliffside Park, it's skewed across the board in other districts.
Unless you can quantify other districts, I have to disagree with you with other districts. Because I've asked the question and other districts aren't finding the exact same problem. So we're gonna have to agree to disagree on that.
Well, I, I, quite honestly, I, I don't know what you'd like me to tell you, other than that we've identified that our students are struggling. And that we're taking a proactive approach.
I don't disagree that the students are struggling, but why didn't you identify that in June? After we went, went through March, April, May and June, they weren't struggling in March, April, May and June? Where you had the summer to plan for some of these things.
Well, I think we did plan and we, we actually planned quite extensively. And we recognized that our plan, that we planned for, for really, I, I don't wanna say June, but we were allowed to start planning in July because that's when the guidance came out. But in July and August, when we did plan, like many other districts, we thought our plan was in place and our students were going to be able to be successful in the plan that we put forward. Just like many other districts, we're finding ourselves the need to pivot somewhat and to reevaluate our plan and reevaluate how we provide instruction during this remote period. So we had a plan in place, we thought the plan was, was, was a great plan. And it was very similar to many other districts' plans. And like many other districts, we have recognized that our plan needs to be revisited and we identified it.
With the board? Because I don't recall seeing a plan for instruction shared with the board.
No, I don't know about instruction specifically, but.
I'm not talking about the reopening plan, this is clearly about instruction and assessment and failures.
What I wanted, what I do wanna say, and I, Mr. Pinto, just interrupting, I don't think anybody anticipated in August that we were gonna have the number of students opting for remote that we do. And I would anticipate 70% of the kids in, 30% of the kids out. It's now turned out to be maybe 40% of the kids in and 60% of the kids out. And I think the number of students who are out and who are remote has caused a lot of stress, changes in instruction. The staff have been in and out because of COVID. And I think all of that impacts instruction. And I honestly think that the whole process on kids themselves has really been too much. And then our type of student who doesn't always have as much support from parents because the parents are out working. Or as Mr. Pinto said, there are older siblings who are home, the parent goes off to work. So I'm a high school student, I have to be on the computer, but I also have to watch my fourth grade sister and see what he or she is doing, what she is doing. So I think we have different challenges in Cliffside that other districts do have.
Well, I was gonna say, with all due respect, there are a lot of districts that have that exact same situation. And I actually think it's unfair to characterize the kids by saying our kids are this way. There are plenty of ESL kids, special needs kids and so forth that can be very successful. And possibly, what I didn't see in any of this is how you looked at the assessments and how the assessments have changed to adapt to what you're both identifying as struggling situations of students. Because obviously, giving a paper and pencil assessment the same way you would do in a classroom wouldn't be appropriate or as appropriate in a remote setting. But again, my concern really goes back to what I've seen thus far is not anything new or isn't anything that I wouldn't consider to have been good quality instruction all along. Quite frankly, I'm very disappointed to hear that there isn't any mentoring going on or that the guidance department doesn't meet with the parents and it took a pandemic to do that.
Well, no, the, the, the guidance department has always met with the parents. Uh, the, the increased need, and that's where we're, that's what we're trying to emphasize here. There's just an increase, you know, where all day long, the guidance staff, the administration is meeting with parents. Where this not necessarily was the case prior to this, because we can, we had students in class. Where, and it's just something else that I wanna make you guys aware is that, you know, we had a plan in place and then the remote option was, was, was offered. You know, our plan was in place and then, so we adapted our plan in the summer, we adapted our plan to include this remote option. So as we were developing the plan, the guidelines for the plan were changing. And, you know, in, you know, by no means whatsoever, we don't assess using paper and pencil at the high school. We use electronic-based assessments.
Well, I, listen, electronic-based assessments to me is just a glorified version of paper and pencil that's being done on a computer. I'm talking about project, true project-based assessment. That's what I'm saying, I mean, that's been decades, that's not a new con, you know, that's not a new concept. Entering kids is not a new concept, caring about kids is not a new concept. Getting involved with kids or giving L's pass fail isn't a new concept. So my question is, why haven't these things been done all along? I mean, with all due respect, I haven't seen anything that, you know, INRS, intervention and referral services or a child study team getting involved and advocating for students, that's their job. Why, why is that new for, because of the pandemic?
It's not new per se because of the pandemic, it's the circumstances that we're living in and adapting this and reemphasizing the need to real, to, to really address these concerns of the students. We're, you're absolutely right, there's a pandemic. Why did it take a pandemic to, to address it? We're not, we're not saying we're creating anything new. What we're saying is the need to do this at a higher level. There needs to be a team emphasis, so we re-looked at everybody and we re, how do we say this? We, we reevaluated what we're doing and that we need to do, we need to ensure that we're doing this, quite honestly.
I would say that you need to ensure that you're doing it, pandemic or not.
Well, regardless, we did not identify this prior to the pandemic. And, you know, we're, this is how we're choosing to address it at this point. Surely we'll be open to suggestions, but project-based learning, it's, listen, we're, it's not so much using project-based learning. It's using project-based learning, which, which has been taking place here since I was in the classroom and before. But it's project-based learning and making it meaningful so that we're engaging the students who are remote. Because project-based learning for remote students is different than project-based learning for when you have students present in class. And that's what we're emphasizing and that's what we're trying to address and that's why these professional conversations are happening. And we're simply saying we identified it and we're providing an opportunity to have these conversations as to how we're gonna make this better for this population, how are we gonna help this population find some success? Because right now, or initially, they're struggling and they're struggling at all levels, not just here. Because right now, or initially, they're struggling and they're struggling at all levels, not just here, um, in the high school. But we identified it here in the high school and we're not afraid to talk about it and we're open to your suggestions, um, but.
I made the suggestion last year that the guidance counselors should be running groups with some of the kids at lunchtime. Because I actually take, you know, offense to the fact that you think that this situation with the pandemic only affects certain populations of students. Students can have very high grades and still be affected by this, so you can't just say, well, only a particular group needs support. I think all students need support. But I also believe that the state, New Jersey Department of Education, put in things like professional learning communities years ago, so the teachers would be having conversations around topics such as the ones we're talking about. Project-based learning has been something that's been around for years and years and years. And the school improvement panel, like, when did the school improvement panel convene to have conversations about this? I think they should have convened last March to be having conversations about this. I mean, I'm happy that you're doing this, but I'm a little disappointed because what I'm seeing to me is something that should be happening in a high school and in every school, every day of the week, irregardless of a pandemic.
I think it is.
I don't, I don't think you should, you know, we should say now, because we're in a pandemic, students need mentoring. I started teaching in the eighties and students needed mentoring in the eighties. And we know that having a caring adult in a child's life is going to make a difference. It shouldn't take a pandemic to make us realize that. And quite frankly, I'm sitting in a room with two educators who I firmly believe know this. Because in nineteen seventy-eight, when Mr. Shelley was my teacher, those teachers cared about us. So it's not something that it takes a pandemic to say, hey, you know what? We should be mentoring kids and caring about them and showing them that we're caring adults in their lives.
I don't, I don't think that Mr. Pinto or anyone has suggested that the teachers have done less than what they are expected to do at any point. Ten years ago, and for the fifteen years preceding that, when I was in guidance, guidance counselors regularly spoke to by phone, contacted students, went around the building, which is much more difficult, obviously, today.
Right.
Spoke to students, spoke to parents and did all the things that Mr. Pinto was speaking about enhancing, that's what I hear Mr. Pinto talking about, enhancing what is already being done. So to suggest for my fifteen years that it wasn't being done, I take offense to that.
I, I take offense to the way it's being presented as if this is something that's new and this is what we're doing now in response to a pandemic.
I don't think Mr. Pinto has presented this as new. He has, as I have said already, presented it as an enhancement. And none of us, none of us educators, and I'm assuming you included, ever took a course, when we were taking courses in college, on how to deal with the pandemic. Well, this is what you do, you see, you'll have some kids who are virtual, you, no, we never, we, this is all brand-new territory. So I think we have to give all of ourselves, boards of education, teachers, administrators, the whole list of everybody who works for us, including the people who serve lunches. Look, this is new territory, we're gonna learn together how to do this, that's what my sense would be.
That, that's not what I take from the presentation, so we'll have to agree to disagree on that.
Right.
Right? Because see, to me, this is being presented as, hey, we're in a pandemic and these are the new ideas that we have, and to me, they shouldn't be new. I think that we owe them to all of our students for a long time. INRS should be happening for a long time. What are we doing to go above and beyond what the INRS committee does? How are we, you know, identifying strategies that are successful and not successful? What are we doing to help teachers share best practices? What's, what's been done in those respects? What does your school improvement panel have to say? What are your professional learning committees working on?
So the, the school improvement panel, it's, it's a great name for a, uh, for a committee, but their, their responsibility is not to actually provide improvement for the school. Their responsibility is to ensure that the evaluation process is followed and schedule professional development. So we do have those conversations about professional development and they are engaged in the professional development that we have. They also have an option to evaluate, but we don't, that needs to be negotiated where they can go in and evaluate, we don't necessarily do that. So, um, the school improvement panel, while it sounds like a great concept, it's really just to, as a watchdog or, or to ensure that the evaluation process, process is handled correctly. Um, we do have our, uh, our pandemic response team and we do have these conversations, some of these conversations in the pandemic response team. Um, you know, a lot of that has been shifted to, um, the protocols that we have in, in the school, not so much the instructional process, but ensuring that we're following the guidelines presented, whether it's from the state or from our opening plan. Uh, we do have, we, we provide, we've dedicated our, our department at the time to having these conversations. Uh, quite honestly, and I, I by no means want this to sound that I've reinvented the wheel here, it's just a greater emphasis, it's really to relook at what we've been doing and how are we doing it, how can we do it more effectively? And quite honestly, the goal is to help, help students, I'm not here to criticize the guidance department. I'm actually grateful for the amount of work that they have done. Uh, they do run meetings during lunchtime, there's a number of meetings that are run during lunch. They're running meetings after school, not after school, but, um, uh, in that one o'clock period, they, they run meetings, there's, there's mentoring meetings, there's support group meetings, there's, uh, meetings for ELLs, there's meetings for struggling students, there's meetings for new, new Americans. So we are doing a lot of these things, I'd be happy to discuss them with you and, and share them with you. Um, but by no means am I saying that we're reinventing the wheel. It's a commitment to these, to ensure that the students are receiving the services that they need in this time. Because quite frankly, you know, as, as much as, I, I don't wanna say practice that we had in the spring, the spring, everybody worked really hard and we tried really hard. And once April came around, we lost students in Cliffside Park. I know for a fact, districts throughout Bergen County lost students and the state didn't provide us answers. Students were not held responsible, quite honestly, because there was a pandemic. And a lot of students were, I don't wanna say given a free pass, but they learned that they could, you know, not be engaged and not participate in remote instruction. And we identified that, we knew that, because that was part of our discussions in our planning, that we cannot continue. And we thought September, October, that we hit it out of the park. And then once those progress reports came in, we started to recognize, hey, there's a problem here, students are struggling. Students are not reporting. And we started to have these conversations. And we shared them with Mr. Romagino, we, we brought in the middle school and we planned to look at this data again, and if you have a better suggestion on how we should pull the data, I'd be open to hearing it. Um, but the bottom line is, we know our students are struggling right now and, and we're working really, really hard to get them engaged. And just by doing, reemphasizing these simple things, we've seen increased engagement. And, and that's what I'm hoping to share with the board and to encourage, you know, and, and make you not encourage, but make you guys aware that, hey, we're, you know, I'm open to doing things differently and doing things better and, you know, I'd love the opportunity to, to hear the suggestions that you have.
Well, I, I would like to know what you're gonna do differently and what you're gonna do better. And I'd also like you to come back to the board after the next marking series to evaluate how the strategies that you've put forth are working. Because I'd like to see how, you know, they're impacting the students' grades and the failures, because I'm concerned about the failures. But I'm also concerned about the assessments, because I think if we're in a pandemic, assessments have to change and there need to be conversations around how we assess students. So I, I'm looking forward to the next presentation where you can have some quantifiable data linking the strategy that you're putting forth to hopefully an increase in grades. Because you want the strategies you're putting forth to increase the grades, right? I mean, that's the, that was the whole beginning of it, the failure rate.
Uh, we want to see, we want to see the students achieve success, yes, we do, we do. We don't want to continue down this path and, and come find ourselves in, in, in June where we still have, we've had students struggle. And quite honestly, you know, the idea of this growth mindset, you know, the developing that idea with, with the kids, you know, this is a conversation that quite honestly, I, I welcome the board to have and, and, you know, take a look at our, 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 our grading policy and, and, you know, a number of districts have shifted away from four quarters of, uh, uh, four quarters and a final grade, where there's just one semester grade at the end of a semester or, or what, the, the grades kind of reboot in January and there's a final grade that the kid, that the kids are measured from January through, uh, uh, through June. Very progressive high schools have taken that approach and that's something I'd be open to discussing. But it's really this, this concept that the, that we cannot allow the kids to continue down this path. That we have to look as instructors and as administrators, what we're doing, how we're doing it and do it differently. And that's all I'm trying to state, is that we've identified a problem. We said, hey, it can't work the way we're doing it and we're going to, we're going to pivot and we've, we've got to address it and we've got to be more active about it. We can't kind of sit back and say, hey, they're adults, they're young adults, they need to make these decisions. Uh, and some of them are very simple, so, some of them are very simple, just engaging the community more. And that's something that we've, we've really tried to make an effort and will continue to make an effort to do.
Well, see, that's where I'm getting confused with the verbiage, because you're saying we're pivoting to these strategies, but then Mr. Shelley's saying we're doing these strategies all along. So I don't understand if you're pivoting to them or if you're doing them all along. That's where I'm kind of getting lost, because I feel like there are things that should have been done all along. As far as putting comments, I'll go a stretch further. When I taught, I put positive comments and negative comments. And if a kid was getting an A, I still gave them a comment. You know, because kids need feedback and, and we give painfully little feedback. I find computer-based assessments takes away the teacher's ability to give feedback to students because frank, quite frankly, sometimes all the kids ever get is a number grade, this is what you got. And they never know what they got right, what they got wrong, or if they didn't understand something, because they're never really given that information, at least from what I see.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons we're encouraging them to use the breakout rooms to provide that feedback directly to the students in a timely fashion. And that's, that's one of the examples. And quite honestly, when we're talking about pivot, th- there's a number of things that we are pivoting, we, we are. Our, our policy, our instructional policy regarding the cameras, which was shared with, you know, with the middle school, I mean, the, the middle school had the same policy, cameras gotta be on. And that's something that we pivoted from, once we recognized we had go guarding. Some of these other things, you're right, no, we, they've been in place for a very long time. And, you know, they're not meant to be critical of anybody, but there's a reemphasis of it. As, as, as our staff has turned over, some things were lost, some things, um, might have fell by the white wayside. Some things might not have been done the same way. And it's really just, we've got to look at what we're doing and ensure that we're doing these things. And in some cases, we might need to do, need, we might need to do them a little bit more. And that's, you know, quite honestly, what we're trying to do here.
I, I think you should look at what you're doing and do it more. And I give a lot of credit to the people who are doing it and have been doing it. I would, if I can just leave you one thing, ask you to look at how you're assessing students. Because you can be doing everything right and everything wonderful. And if you're using a traditional, old-fashioned assessment that you may use when students are sitting in front of you, that may not translate to remote. And it could, not using proper assessments in this type of a situation could wipe away all of the good that you're trying to do in the other areas, because you're not looking at assessments. You know, because I, I would like to believe that the child study team has been and continues to advocate for their students. So, you know, again, pivoting, not pivoting, I don't really understand that. I think that that's something that should have been done, I, I would hope it's being done. But if you're still seeing the failure rate, then it's something else. And I think that you really have to get into what is causing the failure rate. And sometimes the conversation needs to be around assessment. And I apologize for taking up so much time, but I am on the Board of Education for education and we rarely get to have these conversations. So I thank you for coming tonight and giving this presentation and showing us the failure rate. Because a lot of times when we get the presentation on standardized testing, it's really through rose-colored glasses. So I invite you personally to come back to subsequent meetings and show us how the strategies that you're using are making improvements.
I, I'll also bring for you guys, I, I, I usually do it in November, but our AP scores this year were the highest, uh, they've been in a very long time in a number of subjects. I'll also include the AP scores from the spring, um, uh, when I come back. Because I did not do that presentation in November, nor as I asked, but uh, I'm sure Mr. Romagino fair, shared them, but I'll show you the, the yearly data for the AP scores. So that is something that we're proud of you. Thank you, Mr. Romagino, are there any more questions, Mr. Romagino?
Anyone else, anything for Mr. Pinto? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good evening.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to look at the consent agenda. Which I believe you have a copy of in your folder. Uh, just, just a brief agenda tonight. Uh, page two, we are approving, uh, some of our staff members taking some virtual, um, professional development conferences at the top. Uh, we have two bus drivers, one we are approving as a new part-time bus driver. And right below that, a second resolution to accept the resignation of one of our drivers, uh, effective January fifteenth. A little bit further down, Robert Venetia, uh, who is a high school social studies teacher, had requested an unpaid, um, leave for the week of January fourth. We are rescinding that since we were virtual. A little further down, Ken Russo, who is a, um, high school English teacher. Uh, remember last month, we approved some staff members as per contract to work, uh, with students in the intramural program. Uh, we left off Ken's name, he will be working with students, athletes. Uh, type of page three, we are rescinding the appointments for two middle school coaches, uh, Vicky Bucko and Susanna Pesa. Uh, and as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, that's due to, um, a lack of interest in those two sports for this year, and I'm pretty confident that next year, we're hopefully with things getting back to normal, uh, that we will have full participation, uh, in all of our programs, whether it be folk curricula or athletics. A little bit further down, we are, um, adjusting the salary of lunch aids, as, as per New Jersey state law. Uh, Governor Murphy put into effect that the minimum wage, uh, effective January first, was twelve dollars. So we are adjusting it for all lunch aids. And piloting the procedures on page five, uh, we are approving the vandalism and violence, uh, report and harassment report, which we do as, do each year. And due to, um, the fact that we've been, uh, primarily remote for many, many of our students, there are no reported incidents of, of either. So we are reporting none to the state, that's why there is not a report in the folder, uh, because there were no incidents. And that's a report that goes from July first to December thirty-first, and then we will start again January first to June third. So we're just approving that. Uh, Mr. Pinto, if you have anything on the finance?
I'll, I'll. Come here, Mr. Pinto.
We both got here.
Um, yes, a couple of quick eyes, Mr. Romagino, uh, towards the end of the agenda, there's, uh, four resolutions for, uh, the audit, uh, that I'll be uploading to the repository of the state tomorrow. Uh, the, the very last resolution is a resolution for the gym upgrade, as Mr. Capano referenced. Uh, that's gonna get the, uh, project applications going to the Department of Education. Um, as the Capano mentioned, the retaining wall and the gym upgrade. Uh, the audit packets, as I mentioned, we're gonna be uploading to the state. Uh, in the board's folders, there's the AMR, the Orders Management Report and the CAPA, which is the larger report that really goes through each and every, uh, sub-fund in great detail, that's in the board packets. And, uh, we are starting the preliminary, uh, due diligence on the budget. We received the guidelines and the software from the state. And we have a, a county ASBO meeting tomorrow with the county BA going through some of the, uh, initial minutia in regard to getting the, uh, budget process for twenty-one, twenty-two kicked off. And that's pretty much it, Mr. Romagino.
Mr. Capano, we usually get some numbers from the state regarding state aid after the governor does his state of the state address.
That's correct.
Which has happened already. Is there any timeline for when we might be getting that?
The state of the state, that's specific to state aid, it's February twenty-third. And then usually forty-eight hours later. That, that's the tricky part, Mr. Shelley, about the budget, you get the state aid figures so late in process. And you make an assumption that based on your trends over the last several years, you're gonna get incrementally flat or incrementally higher state aid. If that's either wrong to the good or to the bad, you're, you're kind of reshuffling the deck right at the last minute. But it looks like the governor's state of the state will happen February twenty-third, that's a tentative date. And usually forty-eight hours later, we get the state aid. I'll keep you posted.
I, I thought I heard him say something else already, yeah, versus something earlier.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't what they call the state of the state, where he gets into, uh, uh, state aid and, and topics such as that.
That's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be obviously interesting this year, given the state's economy.
Yes, and we've got no direction, uh, from, from anyone in regards to what they expect. We're gonna probably make an assumption that it's gonna be flat year over year. But you're right, who, who knows?
Okay.
But we'll keep everyone posted. That's it, Mr. Romagino.
Okay, I do have two questions, uh, for two members of our community that are watching the program tonight, if you're screening. Uh, the first question is, why would the notification communication system change? Uh, the first question is, why would the notification communication system change as of January first? It is unnecessary and bothersome for emergency contacts to be receiving calls. Are we rece, are we sending notifications to emergency contact? Is there a way to adjust that? So that is something we will look at. I didn't realize that. We did move for a new SWIFT reach system where not only do we send out phone calls, but we also send out follow-up text message. Uh, so we will have Mr. Savascano look at that and, uh, see if we can not send it to emergency contact. We understand that it's usually an emergency person who doesn't necessarily have to receive those texts. Uh, the second question is actually a personnel matter. It's been brought to my attention that art uh, is canceled indefinitely. Uh, art is not canceled indefinitely. We are looking for a replacement teacher. Um, if the parent that asked that question would like to call my office tomorrow, I'd be more than happy to discuss that further, but we are looking for a substitute uh, art teacher for our elementary school, and that will probably begin, um, Monday. But we worked for it short this week. We didn't anticipate a staff member being absent. And we were not able to find a substitute in this COVID environment that could fill in, but, um, that's where we're at right now. So we will find a replacement for elementary. We are in the process of doing. Uh, those are the only two questions I have. And again, if any parents at any time have questions, they can call my office. Uh, if I'm not available, I'll get back to them before the end of that school day. So feel free to do that. So at this time, anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Motion to accept? What's that, Mr. Terabakia, number one? May I have a second, if I may, please? That Mr. Capano? Thank you. I'll take a vote now. Mrs. DeBru? Mr. Capano? Mrs. Frede? Mr. Garcia? Dr. Pempliano? Mr. Rancourt? Mr. Russo? Mr. Shelley?
Yeah.
Terabakia? Page two? So noted, Mr. Terabakia, thank you. Okay, our next board meeting, um, is February twenty-fourth. I'm not sure at that time that the public will be, uh, allowed to attend. At, at some point back in November, the governor allows small group meetings, then, uh, he changed course and we are not allowing the public at this time. That's why we're screening it. But if things do change for February twenty-fourth, where we can have public attend, uh, we will post that information to our website. But our next meeting is February twenty-fourth. So if there are no other questions, motion to adjourn? Okay, um, Mr. Rancourt, Mr. Terabakia.